Could be one of our members.
Yeah, it's on.
All right, it's seven oh one.
Yeah, Bruce McDermott out.
Getting both.
How you doing?
Or.
I'm just asking if you can move the microphone. These are little ones, not as sensitive. Yes, really talkies.
The bush will be city. Uh, this. There. But why among the general. Um, after it's. But. He. Uh, any. For.
Excuse me, Tom, do you have the right microphone selected? Because it's breaking up pretty badly here.
Is it? You might just have to talk into it. They're not sensitive at all. You have to really lean into it. And Susan saying you can't hear her. Right, yeah, because you have to talk directly.
Um. So with embrace. In that. It gets. Uh. Bush. Asian. For. Questions. Plus. They were. Uh. But. Uh, that.
Okay. We are twenty-three dash zero 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 two two seventeen Newtown Road. On the rotten ambulance on this day of three.
Got the wrong mic.
Of digital. Sign. All colors. There are two colors not permitted. About twenty-six. High end. All. And number one six. Zero eight. Seven nine nine. Three twenty-four. I ran yourself. For the record, I'll tell you quite frankly. But I got. Bye. Really. Wait. But. Nothing said that. Turns out. For. The.
Listen.
Mailings.
You get.
Oh, that's. Usually.
Right.
Usually mailings. All of the meeting. This is. Verifiable seats. On. And. X. Out of rotten, Jeff is. The code. Based out this church. Six months. Right in town. Give it. Who's. Those were the mailings. Instead.
Right, it's on the millions that are similar to Navy property. Millions are.
One other thing I failed to mention. The format of this person right here. Wanted to get the parents of. Four. From. Option.
I think we're ready to proceed.
All right. Was. Well, they're not assigned. I identify as. I'm sure.
Direct.
Good evening. My name is John Morris with Connecticut Science Service. On state of the world. Very good.
Well, I'm trying.
They are.
I mean. Deep north. Right in some direction. If your representation, you try. Here to make these pretty accurate notes look like.
This is. Well, it's ours.
And same way I would submit it for the application. Just to propose.
And we have two.
That's. We should be, yeah, change, wait.
Yeah, I'm going to interrupt you in one second. Camera, love you.
Okay.
So you can.
Oh.
You turn it towards the commission and then. Bruce, can you see those?
Yes. But please make sure that you don't select the camera microphone. It's really still pretty garbled.
What do you want? I don't think so, but you're also not coming through on the microphone. Right.
Yeah.
We submitted the application for the sign. We were advised by the zoning officer that it needed the permission of the bodywork boards in the form of variance. Um, for the two reasons that were stated before the script footage. The overall size of the sign complies with the regulations. It's the digital portion. Like rotten has a regulation that says that the digital sign. Not be more than twelve square. Uh, and the colors proposed here is only four square feet. There's also a regulation also specifically regarding digital sign. It's additional over two colors like. Black background and amber display or a black background. Uh. But for those two reasons, we need to request a variance. Uh, so is what the schools have done with visual signs that have been approved. And with regard to the location. Um, for the forty-five mile an hour speed limit zone. Um, in the areas. Time will have a. It's value intended. Rule. You know, here's a. I was like Jason to it and. Basically, I wrote the trends traffic. Uh, this project came about a couple of years ago. Um, it's funded with money that. I've brought and received the American Rescue Plan. Those were federal dollars that are being used to support communities after the pandemic. Um, and of the dollars set aside for the town of rotten. Um, there was money set aside for digital patients. Apparently, it would use in the event of. Where other communities to your evacuation to be an essential message center. Um, if there was a other communication for town, there's a generator of the property inside. Uh, it's normal use. You communicate with it. You can change the messages. Endless associate. Log in. iPad or. In the event that there's. Limited. Communication, as in what happened after nine. All things apply. In our date locally out at the end associated. And for the. But in the case of an emergency, it would be a message center like that in the normal day to day activity. Uh, but it's not an emergency. Maybe using it to public service. Our.
Our C. Next. Uh, CPR classes. No. I'm sorry. My name is Justin Kennedy. I live at one thirteen Blueberry Hill Road. And I'm also the president. All right. Thank you for taking the time to hear this. I appreciate this. I understand and respect the guidelines set by the town to maintain an aesthetic and environmental harmony within our community. However, I would like to present a component case for why our organization believes that a variance would not only be beneficial for us, but also for the greater good of the community. Our primary motivation for seeking a variance is rooted in our commitment to public safety and community well-being. An LED sign of larger dimensions would allow us to convey critical information more effectively, especially during emergencies and public events. The ability to display essential messages with clarity and immediacy can make a significant difference in ensuring the safety and informed decision-making of our community members. Moreover, our proposed LED sign design, while exceeding the specified color limit, is carefully curated to enhance the readability and convey information with the utmost clarity. The use of more than two colors is a strategic choice in that improving visual communication, particularly for events, announcements, and emergency information that may require color-coded distinctions. I would like to assure the zoning board that our attention is not to compromise the character of our town, but rather to enhance our ability to serve and protect its residents. The requested variance is not merely for our organizational benefit, but is aligned with our broader mission of contributing positively to the well-being of our community. In conclusion, I kindly request the zoning board of appeals to consider the unique circumstances and the genuine community-oriented reasons behind our variance request. We believe that granting this variance will empower us to better fulfill our responsibilities to the community and contribute to its overall safety and prosperity. I also, I also received a letter. Um, from. Dave Wolber, W O L B E R. He is the owner, broker of oxy management. Dear council members, I'm writing this letter in support of the rotten ambulance and their request for a variance to the town regulations. As a multi-business and real estate owner in rotten. I fully support them in this matter. This is a company that at its very core is not only interested in the betterment of the community. They are always there to support us when we need them. It's time to support that.
Okay, and just to go back over the first two, I want to make sure. He said one. That.
The first one is. They're upside down for me. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
I read this. It's correct.
I just, I just did.
Um.
Again, I'd like to. Um. Often times when we're looking at a variance, particularly for a sign, it's the overall structure.
For our.
For the size of the sign or the design. Um, in this instance. The sign, as you see it in this still picture. Complies with the regulation. Just looking for digital portions, sign. I thought they were looking for a bigger sign with a town house. All this was in. One regulation. We're looking for the permission. Digital portion. The. If you play. Um. The way the regulations, if you brought it down to full script. Uh, what the regulation is. Which again, that regulation would have in my entire town area. There was twenty-five on the opposite. The traffic light where. Uh, the two roads come together, everybody stopping. It'd be twelve square feet. You're on. On Newtown Road where there's no, no model. Top side or of course. Traffic light. He's looked up. Think that in the. In the landscape, it's not an oversized sign. Uh, shouldn't be a distraction or, or get away from the. You know.
Just clarification. It's not. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, it is. And the, and the digital signs is what's displaying the American flag right now. So from there. Is a, is a card sign.
You can lay that flat down.
Oh, sure. Sorry. The. The, all the copy that you see here is carved. There's some gold details here. The, um. This insignia is a raised. Um. Insignia that also has car things on it. And then from this. This point here down, this section is the visual display. Uh, also that display is, it can be programmed to be discussed after programming it. Where it, where it dims down sometimes you see these things at night and they're really, really bright. Um, the probably, the proper way to use them is they're bright during the daytime when the sun is out. In down to about six percent in the evening. So you can read them, but they're not causing a tremendous glare. Um. You're gonna have a sign.
We've been there since nineteen seventy-nine. We've never had a sign. So we are very excited about having the signs. We, we have a lot of our. Um, community outreach programs that we plan to advertise there as well as give guidance in case of an emergency. So we, we do plan to keep it on for twenty-four hours a day. The main reason is because there are no neighbors that could worry about light pollution or anything like that. There's. The nearest neighbor is the church, which is across the street that is not. Um, occupied twenty-four hours a day. The Javis Smith House across the street. And then from there, the next time, you know, we have a problem. Governor circle, but those houses, their view is not of the front of our building. So that would not be intrusive on net whatsoever.
Thank you. Yeah, I got you. Nice, nice to use zoning rights.
The sign really.
Yeah.
It's one of the tabs. If you look inside, it's. Eight point four. Also.
I do. Most of your questions.
Yeah, I, I just have to ask you once more, Tom. I talked to Sean about the poor quality of sound in this room. He says you have to select the microphone that is not on the camera. Can you, can you tell me? Because I can, I can't hear anything. Um, anyway, I'll, I'll make my comment about the sign, if I may. Uh. The sign that's across the street at the. Uh, library, what, what size is that sign? Do we know? I mean, is that? Are we going to be oversigned here with big signs? And the other thing about talking about an emergency. You know, we have an emergency system in town. And, uh, I'm not sure how significant that is or when that would be used. It would be a rare circumstance, I would think. I'm not terribly. Concerned about a sign. I'm just wondering how useful it really is. And I know that the guys would like to have the sign, but, uh. What's going to be on it for the most part? When we drive by it every day.
Um, for the most, can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
Okay. I'll try to speak up. Um, on the sign, most of the time will be public announcements. Um, advertising CPR classes that we are providing for the residents. Um, free car seat checks that we are providing. Uh, if it's like October, we will put, um, you know, try to change the batteries in your smoke detector because it's, um. The time change. Things along those lines. Nothing like an advertising type. It would more be public service announcements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
First question I have. You said money was appropriated from the town. Is that right?
So the money was appropriated from the ARPA funds that the town received.
It was from the town. What, what did they specifically say you could use the money for?
So the money was from the federal government through the town.
Right.
And we went in front of the town council and we went in front of the RTM. And we presented a dollar figure of some of the projects that we wanted to do. And included it in those projects was a sign. Because of the fact that during the pandemic, we had no way of telling people that there was a vaccination clinic here or how to, you know, um. Make sure you wash your hands, things like that that would have prevented. Some people getting sick. Um.
The town council didn't say you have this money to build this sign. The town council said you can have this money for any one of these number of possibilities that you presented. Is that right?
No, we have an agreement with the town that they. When we met with the town attorney through the town ARPA coordinator. We had to spell out each project and how much it was going to be. And then we entered into agreement with the town. And the money that we're spending on this sign is what was agreed upon through those discussions.
Do you have a copy of that?
I don't have a copy of that. Um. Okay. We have. Probably you might have a copy of our application that was then approved. Because it broke down, it broke down all of the projects that we were spending. The ARPA money.
When you asked for a sign, did you say we want a sign that's going to exceed the zoning limits and it's going to have multiple colors? Or did you say you're just going to have a sign that may, may be used for public service announcement?
To be honest, I didn't know what the zoning regulations were. I asked for a sign. They gave us some amount of, a set amount of money. We contacted the sign manufacturer, Selvin. And this is what they proposed. Um. I didn't become infinitely. Knowledgeable of the.
Okay, no, yeah, fine. I'm just asking.
Yes.
Just trying to figure out how, how.
We were trying to get the best bang for our buck. And since the town wasn't paying for it, the federal government was paying for it. We came up with the best thing that we thought was still aesthetically pleasing and suited our needs and the town's needs.
If there are messages flashing on that board, who controls the content of the message?
I will.
You, not the town.
No.
So. The town want to do a public service message. Townwide, they have to contact you and you have to put it in. They don't have, they can't access.
If there's an emergency in the town. I guarantee I, I will know about it. Simply because of the nature of our business.
And you said. Day to day, you would be doing public service announcements out there.
Yes.
Perhaps for the town. So. Unless the town asks you to put something on there, you're just going to put on what you, the content that you create. That. Right, we associate.
Yes, I think it's the same way that Rasso Tech has theirs and Westside Middle has theirs. And Ride fifty-five and the library. I have a good working relationship with town manager. I have no problem if he asks me to put something on a sign. I would be more than happy to put it on something. But we all work together in the event of an emergency, so we all get the same. Know this that we wanted to disseminate to the people.
Currently, the only sign that you have is what's on your garage is right there.
That is it.
Okay. This is, this is a new sign for your organization.
Yes, it is.
When you, you talked about not being able to use two colors. Why, why is the limitation of two colors? It's boring.
Well, when you're, when you're communicating.
I'm saying.
If. If. If as a commission, you wanted to say that it had to be limited, you certainly could. Um, the display is capable of full color display, which certainly is, is the effective.
Um the display is capable of full color display, which certainly is is the effective way that most people came with these types of signs. Twenty thirty years ago, actually, as recently as ten years ago, a couple of display like this was almost unheard of. They they were. If the Walgreens sign by the shack restaurant is red, but it was on a black background. This one doesn't work anymore. The past sign only had a one color display. I think there was a sign on Long Hill Road. Did the George Shore have a digital sign on Long Hill Road? Yours was a lot of chrome display. Yours, yours is an orange display. It's a nice display. Um but it was all white on a black background. So and you also mentioned um, this thing is capable of streaming video, is capable of having animated things. Some audio ships have very animated and distributed graphics that are designed to have a time square that really catch your attention. This can be, you know, we talked about having it, you know, not change your message for in a timeframe, so you're not having like a constant.
Well, the zoning rates require that you can't change it.
Okay, well, that's that's something that we're not looking to deviate from. You know, we're not looking to have some splash distracting. Those missiles going off. What should I answer your question?
Well.
Oh, yeah, it's it's sort of the door. But so um as Chad mentioned, in any event of emergency, if you graphics that have, you know, red and white on them are are attention getting. It's very effective. Another thing, we do a lot of these signs for for town walls and we do a lot of them for fire departments. Um the fire department in Augustville across from Home Depot, their membership was down to twelve members. And this is kind of a last ditch effort. They invested in a digital sign with us in twenty eighteen. And in twelve months, they received twenty four applications for membership. It was very helpful to the organization. In Rodney, it's it's there's a lot of supportive volunteers.
It's getting that at all. Problem I have is I happen to be on the zoning commission when this was written.
Okay.
So I know what went into deciding that it should be a certain size. It should be only one or two coats. It shouldn't be multiple coats.
Okay.
And so now I'm looking at you asking for a variance from that. Or what's supposed to be a hardship. I haven't heard what the hardship would be if you were required to maintain the twelve square feet.
Well, at this location, I mean, a twelve square feet would be very limited in what you can keep. You know, basically what you could put on two lines of top this. You'd be limited to one. You wouldn't be able to have a message readable if one answer, really almost forced to have a a moving message that you're readable. If we if the if the timing is limited to the one minute interval. If you've got more than three words, you're not going to get them on a display. Now where you can read them, you know, on a two lane road, it's the forty five hundred RPM limit. This I assigned um is is readable and is effective without being an eyesore or distraction.
Eyesores and the eye that the holder as well.
Our 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 intention certainly is to try and make it an attractive sign of pretty low maintenance, high quality. The other thing that I just wanted to point out, if you limit the sign to two colors, you'll never see this on there because we can't even put the American flag on there. Because that's too many colors. So I think that two colors, I think, is kind of handcuffing us a little bit. Because some of the messages that we're going to have to put out or potentially could put out are pretty important. If drivers, even though the speed limit is forty five, if you ever stood in our building, they don't necessarily drive forty five miles an hour. So I think the result, putting it down to a smaller size with less colors is taking away the effectiveness of the sign. In my opinion, I understand the regulations. I would think it would be different if we were going to put this in the middle of Midway Bowl. This is literally just for drivers driving by. And I think that we would lose the effectiveness of the of the message that we're trying to put out if we were restricted to a smaller size with less colors.
Go ahead. Are there any signs that the town? Most of which are point. I mean, I'm just smiling. I don't get it. Yes.
Well, it's it's my understanding that the RASOTech sign is bigger than what's allowed in there. And a variance was given to them. It's twice the digital sign there. I believe it's forty eight square feet. We we are not looking to be trendsetters and trying to rewrite the zoning requirements. We are literally just trying to get a sign that we can use to help the public and put out information on.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One maybe.
My taxes, my tax.
So it's such a free money.
Oh, I didn't say it was free money.
You're implying that from the federal government. Sad that. So I had to succeed. But turn out our little school tomorrow besides. Have another sign at the thrive is. Any one of those signs. And people going, they are, I drive that road. They don't have me to read them. I'll do from an orange, you know, inkly line. I'm not sure that we need another sign by opposite. I'd say all kinds of.
So I think the signs that you're talking about are not even visible from our building. But I don't think it's going to be repetitive sign, sign, sign. We we don't have anything from ninety five until the senior center. And the difference in the signs in front of Ride fifty five and the library is there's a traffic lights right there. So people come to a stop and they can display whatever whatever message they want to display. And the people that are stopped at the stoplight will re will receive that message. We don't have a stoplight. We don't have a stop sign. We need to capture these people's attention when they're doing an excessive forty five miles an hour. But we need a bigger volume, if you will, to put out the message. Ride fifty five and the library doesn't put out that we're doing CPR training for the community. They don't put out that we're doing free car seat checks for the community. We work with in conjunction with the library and Ride fifty five to capture their audience. But we're dependent on them to do it where we could be doing it ourselves and increase the amount of people in the town that are CPR trained that have safe car seats in them that will come to do our training. And overall, for the betterment of the community, I think that this sign is not like a billboard where it would be over gaudy or anything like that. I think that it's tastefully done. And given the particulars of the traffic pattern that's near it and the absence of any neighbors, I think it's actually a perfect place to put a sign because people are going to see it. People are going to notice it. There's two signs right in front of the library. Which one do you look at? That I mean, they're they're right there. There's nothing where we are. So for that reason alone, I I agree that I don't want to drive through rotten and be like velocity to strip. I understand that, but this is up far enough away from those other signs. And I think it's more effective for us to have a bigger sign, given the fact that even in front of the middle school, they have a stop sign. I mean, I'm sorry, a traffic light. So we don't have any of those benefits. So in order to get our message across or whatever message the town wants us to put across, we need a bigger sign to effectively put that message out there so that it's received by the public.
You mentioned twenty four square feet. Was that four by six or was? He brought the uh half the size of the billboard then. Thirty high, thirty high. By eight feet.
A standard billboard is ten feet tall and thirty eight, forty five.
Doctor, cut this over here. It's just so hard in the math, right?
Your ceilings are two feet, so two, four, six. From my hand to the wall in width, any of this fall. I can also, I have, I have photographs on my phone that I can bring up quickly. It would show you half a dozen of the literally exact same size sign that we've done over the last couple of years in surrounding towns. Um old still pictures as well as video if you like to look at it if you have it for a while.
So what you're showing in these.
That's exactly what it would be. Like, to show you, this is a representation idea of what it's going to look like. I could show you pictures of the actual signs with messages on them. And let you see them look like.
Anything you would submit has to be submitted for the record.
I could show it to you and then he heard you.
Verbal data knowledge exhibit.
We're talking about photographs. All. Many there are. I would pre-exhibits. And this would effectively is looking forward.
Yeah, this is going to be, you know, Bruce is giving videos.
Okay.
I don't know.
I take it, when you switch towards that, where you spot around there will not be there. But that's a picture of the sign in front of the fire department. We did. The other one, one on the list is three.
Mark that one exit that four. The open fire department sign is exit four. Well, he and fire company sign would be exit five.
Um all of those signs, by the way, are literally like eight feet from per, they're very, very close to the road. Um our sign is twenty five feet back. Again, that disorientation, the two words outcome with the highlight around them are because I searched for it. I searched for the word outcome. The rest of the signs, we actually looks at. Often prior, our sign.
That's three by eight as well. I have one comment from planning zoning commission. At a meeting on December twelfth, twenty twenty three, the planning zoning commission reviewed the referral listed above and made the following comments. The commission recommends against granting this variance as it is incompatible with the residential use basis. And the other questions, Bruce?
I vote no.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, the sound is a little bit garbled, so it's hard for me to understand what's going on.
One for Tom, just is this appropriate to do it now or?
Yes.
But this is an RM zone. Right. Now, as I read section in the Here we go, illuminated sign. There's uh all illuminated signs including digital electronic signs are prohibited in residential districts. Parentheses, R, RS, and RU. Except for the following uses, which don't apply here, I don't believe. Is RM considered a residential district under that part of the rate?
If I can see the rates, I I don't want to quote them without looking at.
The bottom there.
So illuminated signs, have you all the lights signs including digital prohibited in residence except for the following uses of third use would be a public local, state, and federal buildings. This would be a local building.
Local governmental unit, right? To read that is local governmental.
I I would consider ambulances or the fire department as a municipal thing.
Do you agree that this is a residential area that otherwise could be prohibited, even though the parentheses don't include RM?
No, that's specific. Residential, the RM is residential multifamily and where it is residential districts, those are specifically for single family. If it meant RM, it would state RM.
No, I just want to thank you for hearing this out and I appreciate you giving us the time to present this to you.
I have a question. I have a question. You. Sorry, you entered the council.
Yes. Yes.
So they said of the work, it's five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Then you entered the sign company. You've been, been listed five thousand. I'm just nervous.
We, we were given. Different options to choose from and our board of directors chose this one. Because we thought it was the most aesthetically pleasing and fit mostly with our business and the location. So this is the one we decided on. We didn't do it because it was, had a lack of signs. We did it because it was allowing us to convey our message in an effective way.
And that's all the rest.
Thank you both. Appreciate it very much. Let's go to the back.
Comments?
I'm sorry, say that again. Yeah, go ahead. Are you asking me how I vote?
Take a motion, second, then you can discuss the motion. Okay, either way, just so everyone's clear.
I move that we disapprove this request for variance. Should we?
Yeah, that's why we always done the.
Yes, yes. Otherwise, it's a double negative.
Move that we approve this motion, this, this variance request.
In discussion.
I just think it's a. A large, too, way too large a sign. I don't think that the, the uses that it's been proposed for are really necessary for the town. We have a lot of options that we use now. I just don't think it's a good idea.
I don't, I don't perceive a hardship in denying the request for parents. There are, there's an alternative of a sign that meets the zoning requirements if you want to have a sign. But I don't think it meets the criteria for granting a parent. Difficult to come up with a.
I totally agree. Nice idea. The subvention for all those in favor of granting variance, they can probably say aye. All those opposed, they can by, by saying nay.
We have no course. Did you have time to review the minutes or have any comments in the minutes?
I reviewed them online, but I wasn't at any of the meetings, so I, I wouldn't have stayed anywhere.
Bruce, any comments on the minutes?
Uh, yes, I've read them and they're fine. I agree.
If you need more time to review.
Yeah, I.
You didn't.
I'd ask for a packet if I thought. You feel more comfortable?
I'm not gonna, I'm gonna stay no matter what, because I wasn't at any of the meetings. You've got a quorum that can approve it here. Feel free.
Close on the minutes and. August nine is November.
All, all this.
No, all this. Uh, there are new applications. I, of course, I don't have a list in front of me, but.
Most of them were here.
So moved.
I'll talk to Sean and see if we can figure out this.
Okay, yeah, good. Motion was by Doug and seconded by. He's good.
All right. All right. Good night, gentlemen.
I hope it's long round there.
Okay, I'll be thinking of you.
I wanna hear any whining.
Oh, it's great down here.
Where's, where's he?